Welcome to the June 8, 2022 Palmer City School District Board of Education meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this is.
Roll call, Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Bratz.
Present.
Mrs. Karpis. Mr. Kreis.
Present.
Mr. Ruda.
Present.
Mr. Vaughn.
Present.
Unless there is an objection, we will dispense of the reading of the special meeting notice. Okay, good. Live streaming check. Dr. Smiley, can you please confirm that the public portion of this meeting is currently being livestreamed?
Yes, it is.
Can you please monitor the livestreaming throughout the public portion of this meeting? And if there is a problem, please speak up immediately so that the technical difficulty can be addressed.
Yes, we will.
Thank you, sir. So I'm going to go ahead and hand the floor over to you at this moment, and you can provide a review of the information you shared with us since January, please.
Sure. Really, this has been a two-part planning process that we've been engaged in. First, we worked with a committee that started out about 65 residents. By the end, had about 45 residents participate in four different meetings to help design what would be the future vision of a, or the vision for the future facilities in our district. We developed a 4-2-1 plan from that for elementary schools, two middle schools, one high school. And we incorporated as much feedback as we possibly could. We actually sent flyers. The Monitor had a survey for all of our residents to complete. We did parent surveys as well for that, staff surveys as well, and again, used that focus group of approximately 45 residents by the end to develop the 4-2-1. That, however, is not really what we're here to talk about tonight. What we're here to talk about tonight is consolidation. Consolidation after the board adopted the 4-2-1 plan, the very next board meeting in mid-April was dedicated to looking at some different scenarios that we could look to consolidate our facilities in an effort to save operating funds. And that is what we're here to talk about this evening, or listen to our public. I want to be very clear. No one wants to close schools. No one wants to demolish the school. That's not, we don't go into this business, or this role, or this profession, or this field to do that. We go into these roles to provide opportunities for kids. And opportunities for kids essentially come from staff. Eighty percent of our budget is staff-ish, eighty percent-ish. And right now, we project a $24 million deficit in the year 2026. And so we have to be very strategic about trying to not get to the year 2025 and realize we have a $26 million deficit the next year, and oh my gosh, what are we going to do? So the more fiscally responsible we can be now with a sense of urgency and immediacy, the better we can make 2026 and hopefully beyond. The very real fact is that we cannot afford to continue to operate three high schools. It just is not a financially responsible perspective for us to try to think that we can have three high schools with a looming deficit. The most significant measure we can take to stem that deficit, to close that deficit, to potentially even get into the green in 2026, is to consolidate. The consolidation options that we looked at, this made the most sense, what we're projecting tonight to be the 6-3-2 plan, and closes two elementaries, Renwood and Parma Park, and then closes Parma Senior High. The other reality, and there's a few that have led us to say, why Parma Senior High? None of our three high schools are large enough to serve as one. We looked at that. We really said, could, if we're going to be one high school, and that's the future vision of the district, can we be one high school now? And it's not a realistic scenario. Parma Senior would have a capacity of approximately 2,500 students, which would be only 10 through 12, and that would be with restructuring our board office into classrooms. And at this point, the OFCC has said that Parma Senior High, the cost of renovating is 72% of the cost of building new. So there's a lot of needs in terms of infrastructure. We don't want to invest a lot of money into a building that really the OFCC has said that we should move on from. And so knowing then that none of the schools is large enough to be one, we knew we had to be two. And our feeling, as we've expressed in work sessions and continue to express, is that we want to take the facility, or the campus, so to speak, of the future one high school and avail that in its completion to our architects and our construction managers. We understand that construction of one high school is contingent upon passage of a bond issue. We understand that fully. But at the same time, we also have to make a decision in terms of which of the high schools would close. And at some point, we are hopeful we're going to pass a bond issue. At some point, we want to be aspirational. We want to say that, yes, here, right here, at 54th and Longwood, with some help from the city so that we can have better traffic patterns, we can build the best high school in Ohio. And I'm fully committed to that. I know our board has said, if we go ahead with a bond issue in November, it'll be for the high school first. That's what we want to do. To try to say then that we're going to build around Parma Senior High is not, it just doesn't make sense. Why would we put those types of handcuffs on the folks that are going to design a 3,000 student high school with 17 different career tech programs on this campus? The final piece, and this is probably the most unfortunate, and I think that this is what is most upsetting, as I've had conversations with people and see people's reactions, no longer can you sit on properties and just have them, and just kind of cut the lawn around them, and even minimize the costs that go into maintaining the building by turning the heat off, and maybe one day we're going to need this again. We can't do that anymore. The state of Ohio passed Ohio Revised Code 3313.413, and that mandates that within one year of closing, that building has to be offered to a charter school. And we, as the public school district, aren't in position to do that. They are essentially our competition. We don't want to offer to them a facility that they can then use to poach further children from our school district. So while Mrs. Bratz asked the question, and asked the question well the other day in the business committee meeting, there's a lot of school districts where you look around and you see old schools, or their boards of education. And until this law passed, you could do that. And potentially, that would be a better option for us. But that's not an option anymore. Ohio Revised Code, which takes effect July 1, 2022, about three weeks from now, mandates that we have to either demolish the school, or we offer it. And that's not a risk that I would have ever advised the board to enter into, in terms of entering it up, or offering it up, I should say. So in sum, no one wants to be here. Nobody wants to close a school. No one wants to knock down anything. But ultimately, we're about providing opportunities for children, and we have to preserve our operating funds in as fiscally responsible and as a strategic manner as possible so that we can continue to do that. This is about avoiding draconian cuts, like going $1,000 for pay for play, 32, 33, 34 kids in a classroom. That's what this is about. Sending high school kids home midday after they've taken their five classes. Those are the types of cuts we would have to look at if we were looking at a $25 million deficit. This will allow us to trim that deficit, and we have to exercise these options. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Smiley. So this part's our invitation for public comments. So I really are grateful that we're able to have your participation from you guys this evening. To ensure that we conduct an organized meeting, please be sure to complete a request form. I have several here already, but Ms. Bartowski over here has the forms that are blank, so if you came in a little bit later and still want to say something, the forms are right there for you. Then, as I collect them, we will call the names in the order in which we receive the requests. When we call your name, come to the microphone up front here, state your name and address. And please remember that the questions are about consolidation, not about a bunch of other stuff. We can go into a myriad of things, I'm sure, but this focus on the consolidation, okay? So you will be allotted three minutes to speak, and there's no need really to fill all three minutes if your question doesn't, okay? Just kind of a joke. So if you ask any questions, we'll note them, and they'll answer them at the end of your three-minute period. We'll try not to use your time to answer the question. Again, we thank you for the participation, and we look forward to hearing from you guys. So does anybody need to fill out a form? I'll move at once. It gets crowded up there. So I have five. Five. Okay, nobody else? Oh, we have six. Please, if you could, please.
I don't know. I want to, I'm going to say things.
Okay.
You can always decline.
What's that?
She can always decline.
Yeah, you can always decline if you don't want to say anything. How's that? But I'll give you guys a couple of seconds. You don't have to write out your question. This, what it's about.
I don't have three minutes to say anything.
Does kind of remind me of when I taught, so. Waiting for you guys to get your books out and stuff. So we have a handful. So Michael Johns.
Since I have three minutes, I have two things I'm going to disagree with. One, Parma High School 10 through 12 is large enough.
First, two things.
Hello.
Yeah, and name and address, please.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, I can't raise that up. Name is Michael John, 7401 Dogwood Lane, Parma, Ohio.
Thank you.
I have to disagree with the numbers. We have enough room in Parma High School to house a full high school. And in the same breath, we have to move the school board offices. That's in the plan, because you're knocking down the high school. So either way, you have to have those rooms open for people to use. Valley Forge has 91 rooms, so they post. That's enough room for one junior high school. So that's what they say, okay? So that said, that's why I disagree here. Now, on the other hand, mind you, I went to all the meetings, and I'm all for the bond issue and building new. But I have not found out from Mr. Smiley, when that will be on a bond, or when it will be up for vote. Number two, the other thing you were looking for was, when will the money from the state be available? You said you were going to meet with the people. We never heard about that. That would be something to find out. So here's my statement. All I hear is how the consolidation is moving forward. How? There is no date set for a bond issue on the ballot. The superintendent has made it clear he does not know when he would like to put this up for vote. There is no money for a new high school, but yet the board is about to vote to knock down the only school that can fit 10 through 12. That makes no sense. We are a school system running headlong into a $24 million deficit. The system is about to give pay increases. There should be one high school in Parma. It was the cheapest, it will be the cheapest to consolidate. The most expensive tech programs are in-house at Parma campus. We don't have to move those. Parma High School sits in the most densely populated area of the city of Parma, but we're going to knock it down. Valley Forge should become the junior high, 7 through 9. Normandy can be used for board education office, but as we've been told, you can't do that. So there might be another solution for it, or we might just knock Normandy down because we don't need it. If and when the school system was ever to pass a bond issue, yes, the consolidation plan suggested would be the way to go, to proceed. Since there is no bond issue passed, and the odds of passing a future bond issue are almost nil, because we need a major levy passed to fund our deficit, why would we try to keep two high schools open? Just go to one now. Many of the current board members, not a year and a half ago, touted that we are in good financial health, as the system was, yet we are faced with the largest deficit ever in the history of our school district. This consolidation, even going to one high school, will barely dent the upcoming deficit. In every case before, consolidations were done to save money, but they all failed to save any money. We always ended up with deficits, and we never saved any money. It is time for the school system to move forward with one high school. It is time for the school system to get its contracts under control. Yes, the plan that the board is currently looking to pass fulfills the promise made by some of the board members, never to close Normandy. At what price?
Can I cut you off there, please?
At what?
No, wait. I want to know who said that.
The president of Karpis made the promise in her, and her election campaign said, as long as I'm a school board member, I will never close Normandy. There to answer your question.
Thank you.
At what price? The price of a better education, or the students?
It's false.
I know it's false. Let me clarify, that absolutely was never said.
Okay. I'll have to look for the recording, but I have.
Just three minutes?
But you cut it off.
I'll give him another 20 seconds.
One high school allows for the consolidation of the educational program. One high school allows for the tech programs to be at one campus, not two. One high school puts all our resources in one place to better serve our students. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are a few thoughts I had.
Yeah.
Do you want me to share?
Absolutely.
Okay. First, I would love to put the bond issue on in the fall. I think I've been pretty consistent about that. I think I've said that everywhere. I also have to be sensitive to the inflation that everyone is experiencing right now, the gas prices. And I've said, probably every time I've addressed that question, our board will continue to look at the economy, will continue to have these conversations. We've had them already in public. You've seen them. They're available on YouTube. All of our board meetings are recorded and housed. We have until the first week of August to actually hand in the petitions to be on the ballot for November, and so we are really taking as much time up to that deadline as possible. I think we all, every time we go to the gas station, feel like this is a perfect storm against us. But at the same time, when you're looking at about a 3.8 or 3.9 mil bond issue, which is about $20 on a $200,000 home, that still might be a realistic ask. So we have to weigh those things. So I've said that really every time that I've addressed that. In terms of the OFCC funding, we did have a meeting with the OFCC, and they reiterated what we were hopeful, we would get a different answer, but we didn't. We were reminded that they won't tell us when exactly we would get state funding, because they simply don't know. We are 380th, I believe, in line, so to speak, out of 608. That sounds horrible, but the reality is that out of those 380, in any given year, maybe only five, or 10, or 15 districts are actually asking for state funding, because they too have to pass a bond issue. So they just, they don't know how many of the school districts ahead of us in line will actually be ready to capitalize on that state funding. So that is the reason they won't tell us. It's not because they're devious, or trying to hide anything, or kicking the can down the road. They simply don't know how many districts are going to have their hand out as well. So those are two points. And then, you know, the third point, and Mr. Johns and I often go back and forth on numbers, we looked at, could we fit one high school here? And the answer was no. And it was no for a couple of reasons. We don't want to be a 10-12. We don't. We want to be a 9-12. We don't want ninth grade in middle schools. We want one change for the grade configurations of our district. It's going to be a K to 4, a 5 to 8, and a 9-12. And I know this might not make a lot of difference to folks who don't work in schools, but I can tell you, the less change that we have to go through for our kids and for our staff, the better that is. And continuing to mix-match grades isn't going to help anybody. Most especially, our kids will go through continual transitions. And again, the 10-12 would still necessitate money invested in changing that board office. So those are just a few thoughts I had to his comments.
All right. Many of those are mine as well. Basically, junior high, by the way, is never used anymore. That's very archaic. They're called middle schools now. No longer junior highs. That would be too many moves for kids, as I was thinking about it. You're asking us to move kids here, then there, then move them back when we get the building built, if we get it built. So all that stuff, it's way too many moves. So many moves for a staff, it's too many, period. It's just way too much. And we have not voted about putting it on the ballot yet. That's coming in July. So as Dr. Smiley mentioned, we have until August 8, something like that. What is it? August 2. So I know there's a board meeting around July 28-ish that we vote on that. And believe me, it's not going to be an easy vote, for sure. Don't want to get in a peeing contest with you, Mr. Johns, about who said what, far as campaigning, but I can guarantee that there's not two people up here that said that, as you claim. So these fabrications of statements are really kind of distressing. So unless you can show it to me on video, I'm not buying it. Okay? Thank you. Next person, Phil Thomas.
My name's Phil Thomas. I live at 1660 Gettysburg Drive in Parma, Ohio. Lifelong resident of Parma, proud graduate of Parma Senior High. The superintendent has characterized our school system as, quote, "warm, safe, and dry, a functioning, positive environment for our students, and well-maintained." It is a system where our students have won over $85,000 in scholarships this year. Yet this administration is trying to euthanize the cornerstone of our system, Parma Senior High School, much before its time. Look, we can consolidate, but it must include Parma Senior High School. It's clever how both plans that have been presented to the board eliminated. You don't need to build a new school building to accomplish a consolidation during times of 8% inflation and unpredictable future building costs. The superintendent, who doesn't live in the district, has an expense card, so he also doesn't have to worry about the gas prices that are going on right now. I would love to, he would love to build what he says wants to be the best high school in Ohio, but at what cost? I would love a Tesla at this time. The superintendent has said that the cost of new construction bond issue to the voters would be $22 a month for $100,000 home value. This was in Cleveland.com back earlier. Now he's saying that it's $22 for a $200,000 house. How can we be trusting of any of the figures that we're getting? This is what's confusing the people. When asked about the bond issue, on what millage might be on the bond issue, he can't give us a number. He says there's a range. Again, this is what's confusing people that are looking at what's going on in the system. The whole proposal is built on a house of cards. In fact, even the state's 37% matching fund isn't guaranteed. It's kind of like getting a Kohl's gift card, and you have it for $5 or $10, and you're going to spend it next year when those prices on what you want to buy are not there anymore. The new construction bond issue is only for the high school. You'd have to come back for additional bond issues for both the elementary and also the middle schools. This is in addition to any renewal or regular new levies for operating expenses. It's dizzying to the voters. The system received $35 million in COVID funds. One way the administration used these funds were to hire ancillary counselors whose money for salaries runs out in two years. How would you like to be those people that are hired, knowing that you won't have funding for their salaries in two years?
Sir, your time's up, sir.
Could I have a couple more minutes?
You can hand it to me if you like.
I'll hand it to you.
Thank you.
I mean, I had something to tell you about.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
But in summary, consolidation is inevitable, and I implore the board to reject both plans that don't include Parma Senior High School. Hire an architect to look at other possibilities. You are the ones that we voted for. You're the ones that live here in Parma, Parma Heights, and in Seven Hills. I do, too. Don't let somebody else who is not in the, in this district, that doesn't have to worry about what's going on, that may not be here five years from now, determine what's our future and our vision. Please, President Vaughn, Vice President Karpis, Mrs. Bratz, Mr. Kreis, Mr. Ruda, don't be the board whose legacy is one that euthanized Parma Senior High School. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
A couple of thoughts. First, I'd love to see this Cleveland.com article. I'll look back through, but I've been pretty consistent in saying that the $22 is for a $200,000 home. It's approximately $11 on $100,000. And the reason I can't guarantee a range at this point is because we have not yet locked in an interest rate. Obviously, that's a huge component when you're borrowing this type of money. So it's not being evasive, I'm not playing games. I simply, we don't have that locked in yet. We won't have that until we would actually be voting on a bond issue, and at that point, it will be extremely clear what the interest rate is and what the payment will be, and we will make that extremely public. But that is not finalized at this point.
I'm just asking Sean.
Yeah, it's $23.
$23.
$23, $33.
For what?
A month.
On what millage?
That's four mils for...
Right. And we've said we're trying to stay under four mils.
Yeah, that's four mils. It's four times 30, four mils times $35 divided by 12 months, times two. Well, times two for a $200,000.
That was not a $200,000, huh?
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Thomas, thank you very much. If you'd like to hand me your stuff, I'll read the rest of it, if you want to send it to me.
I did my previous letter.
Okay. That'd be beautiful. Thank you so much.
Can we clarify the, can we clarify the OFCC 37% and how that works? How long we're guaranteed that for in this process?
We are only guaranteed the 37% if we lock in for this bond series.
Which means what?
Which means if we don't decide to lock in and go for, you know, a bond attempt in November, then we would be subject to the reassessment, and the reassessment is not determined in terms of what the OFCC matching piece would be. It could be higher than 37%. It could be lower than 37%. We just don't know. Because again, the OFCC has a very complicated formula that is not just for Parma City schools, it's for 608 school districts. So their main components they look at are trending for us in the wrong direction. They look at, and again, there's a lot of variables, but the major two are property values and enrollment. They look to reward essentially, through larger amounts of funding, districts that have decreasing property values and increasing enrollment, meaning there's not enough capacity in the community to pay for the more students that are coming. So we're moving in the wrong direction on both of those. We have increase in property values, which admittedly, most of Ohio did, yet Parma's, I believe, outpaced all of Cuyahoga County. So it's great for people looking to sell their homes, but for people paying the taxes right now, as Mr. Norris alluded to, kind of hurts a little bit. It also hurts in terms of the OFCC ranking. The other piece we have is declining enrollment, not falling off the cliff enrollment, but our enrollment is not increasing. So 37% may be the high of what we ever see again. It may not be, because again, it's not Parma exclusive, right? This is all a ranking. This is, this is all a ranking system on 608. So once, once we, if we were to lock in and we were to decide that we could go in the fall, that's locked in for 13 months, so we could go in November and we could go in May. After that, the 37% is not there anymore. It'll be subject to whatever that reassessment is. If we don't go at all, we're also subject to that reassessment.
Any questions?
Yes, thank you.
I just wanted to, because I passed a note to Sean, so I wanted, I asked him what the equation was that he used. So he wrote it out for, to come up with the dollar amount per $200,000 home. So it's up here if anybody wants to see it afterwards. Just, I didn't want people to think that I was just passing notes to somebody in the meeting without...
I'm going to read that note out loud.
It's up here if anybody wants to see it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ruda. Okay, so that brings us to Grace Zeicher. Is that right? Is that right? Sorry. That's fine, but is that the right?
No, Mesekar.
Mesekar, okay, sorry.
Live at 5902 Albert Avenue. I totally agree with everything you guys are doing. Levy hasn't passed in this town, embarrassingly to me, and I'm ashamed of it, since 2008. It's a bunch of baloney because they think you're stealing money and all this other stuff. Well, you're not. The only thing I disagree with is that closing this school. I think Valley Forge should be closed because it's like centralized here and it's bigger, from what I understand, okay? I know all the schools, because I've been in all three high schools, are very bad of disrepair. I understand that the state won't give you money because everything's outdated. And I understand why you won't like tear down walls and things like that because then you're into another whole wormhole with that stuff. So I understand why you want to tear schools down, but I do believe in a consolidation. And I do believe you, Charlie, care about the kids. That's all I want to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You've got two more minutes. We like that tone. Keep going.
Do you have anything to say?
Are you a student? Where do you go to school?
I go here. I'd like to say a couple of things.
Sure.
Should I say my name first?
Sure.
Ariana Sawyer, I live in Hampstead Avenue for the 807. I agree with what she said. I agree with what you guys are doing, but I disagree in closing this school. And some of the people that are complaining about like closing this school aren't even here. They didn't pass levies. They didn't, they didn't vote to pass levy, so, and they're complaining about it. And I just, I think you should, like, I don't think you should close down this school. I think you just close down Valley Forge. This is, it's in worse shape, I believe.
I mean, they're all in bad shape.
Very good.
That is very true.
But thank you.
Can I ask?
This is what happens when you don't pass levies. This is what happens.
Right.
Exactly what happens.
Can I ask you what grade you're in?
Oh, ninth.
Well, I have to...
I'm going 10th, yeah.
Well, I have to tell you, you are very brave to get up here and talk in front of anybody about any particular thing, and we appreciate it. And I do have one question for you. Tell me one thing you love about your school that is not related to a specific building, like maybe about the culture or your experience here. I want to hear one thing that you love about your, your experience in high school.
I just like, I like all the teachers, like, and I think they're very respectful, and I certainly like Charlie because I think he does care about all the kids, like my grandma said.
Well, thank you, and I will agree with you that we have the best staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for speaking out. Appreciate it.
Can we clarify as to why we can't close Valley Forge? There's a, there's a very good reason why we can't just close Valley Forge. Do you want to explain what that is?
Are you talking about its location?
No. Why Valley Forge needs, that building needs to stay open.
As any kind of school.
As anything. It needs to stay there. It's because of the city of Parma Heights.
Yeah, okay. I thought that's where you were going.
Yeah, I wanted to...
I didn't want to jump into something.
There's a very good reason why we can't close that one.
Parma Heights is an important part of our school district, and we want to make sure that there's always a presence in Parma Heights. That's obviously why Hillside continues to be a school that we would preserve as well. Seven Hills is also an important part of our school district, so that would be the rationale.
And also, it's important to note that Parma City Schools are the largest employer for the city of Parma Heights.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at.
Yeah, so if we...
Thanks, I just didn't mind.
If we were to close, I mean, there's...
I did.
There's already going to be, you know, everybody kind of takes a hit in the eventual new footprint of the school district. That, though, however, would be crippling to a large portion of our community, unfortunately, and our city, and healthy communities, healthy schools, healthy schools, healthy communities, so. Steve is reminding me we're doing more listening than talking today.
So that brings us to Ariana Sawyer. Oh, that was her. Well, then we'll skip that one. Thank you, Ariana.
Good job, Ariana.
Thank you so much. No problem. John Rocheck. John Rocheck?
How do you do? John Rocheck, 5441 Chevrolet Boulevard, apartment 8205, Parma, Ohio. Okay, 2011, there was a superintendent, Jeffrey Gallagher, okay? He wanted to get a school levy passed. He also said that if we didn't pass it, the state would come in, Parma City Schools would be under state receivership, okay? He also said, he also said in the meeting, if this is passed, no schools will be closed. Okay, great. Well, you know, I didn't want to see that, so I voted in. Two weeks later, the three schools were closed under his leadership, okay? So I felt like I was being lied to, okay? Now, going forward, I understand what you're trying to do, and I appreciate that, but how, you know, you guys inherited a windstorm. You didn't create it. You inherited it. So people remember the lies of the past and whatnot, and how are you guys going to go ahead and conquer that? How are you guys going to go ahead and sway the people to your side and say, hey, we need this levy? And if worse comes to worse, it's going to go under receivership again. I don't want to see that happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rocheck.
One thought, I think that probably the best step we took, and not that we don't have capacity within house, because we do. Sean is an accountant. Sean is our treasurer. Sean was also on the state auditing team and certainly understands how school finance works. But we also recognize that sometimes independent voices carry more credibility with our community. So we actually hired, instead of letting the state auditor do our audit, we have a private audit that comes in every year. Ray and Associates, Associates, Ray and Associates, it's based in Worcester. And that audit is public. That audit, you can look it up on the state auditor's website. Two years ago, we actually received a perfect audit, meaning they didn't even have any suggestions. Usually, there's what's called a management letter. And the management letter, it's not defining a fault, but it's a sort of a series of suggestions to strengthen your financial processes even more. They couldn't even give us a management letter. So I 100% agree that we've inherited a pretty nasty reputation, but when we bring in private accountants and a private auditing firm and they say, my gosh, we don't even know what to tell you to get better, we just have to keep that narrative in front of our public because I think it's pretty compelling.
All right, thank you. Yeah, so Mr. Porche? Rocheck, sorry. I thought it was a P. Mr. Rocheck, I appreciate the kind words and recognizing the fact that the current board, the board's been together here for the last couple, four, going on five years, has not done any of those things that have happened in the past, and we are not related to that. I do feel like that we often are paying for the sins of our brothers. And so I do want to clarify that. I appreciate that and your support. I do want to clarify, too, that before we make the vote on to do this stuff, that we are not repeating what other people have done. We're doing what we're doing. We're not doing what happened in the past. So you can't think about what's going on in the past and equate it to us. We are totally different in our whole mindset, so. And I think, I really believe, and I believe the whole board will agree, we're here to help the kids. We're here to give them the best education possible. We're here to give them the best opportunities that we can. I went, my daughters went through that time period where they were going home after four periods and taking college classes and doing that stuff and not getting the education they needed here at the school. And I taught through all that, too. I saw them seeing kids go home at lunchtime. You know, so, you know, I lived it, so I understand it. But I don't want the sins of the past boards to weigh on us, this current board. We are working very hard to make sure that our kids, our students, and our communities get the opportunities they deserve. Thanks. So our next person, Elizabeth Casper.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Casper. I reside at 11331 Ronald Drive, Parma, Ohio. I am here to, number one, thank individuals like Ms. Sawyer and the other alumni that have stepped forward pleading their case for keeping Parma High School. However, I feel that the board, I support the consolidation. I support building a central, single high school. Based on my experience working in other school districts and living in other communities, but people have to remember, when Normandy was built, nobody wanted to go to Normandy. They were attached to their individual high schools. And I think in the same token, the students have that similar attachment to their neighborhood and their school. But I think the board has been very sensitive in their plans about keeping elementary schools in close vicinities to where the children live. Then, as they move up into the middle schools, they are getting to know the other students that are in their community and then preparing themselves to go to a single high school. And what the board has done to be able to keep all the cities in our school district active and involved, I think is terrific. But going forward, looking forward into the 21st century, which is what the whole purpose of creating a new building with better technology, better architect to protect our children from these terrible, heinous shootings that have occurred, we need a new high school. And in doing so, my question involves, will the high school have a campus environment? And what I say is, like, for example, in Orange High School, they have a county public library attached to their campus, as well as, you know, the extracurriculars, the little theater. And I was wondering if we were thinking along those lines for a campus environment. My second question involves, for those schools that are closing and shutting down, what can be done or with regards to sexual predators? I have noticed in the Parma school system, when schools have closed, like Cryle Elementary, people that are known sex offenders have moved into the area. And I was wondering what we were going to do to keep our neighborhood safe for those areas where the school is closing. Doctors, how do you pronounce your last name?
Smiley.
Smiley. I commented that they will be going to charter schools. And I see that you already have it planned that Parma Park will be going to a charter school.
No.
No. Oh, I thought it was going to Parma Academy, and they're with the board there.
Yeah, I think Aces is our school, so Aces is our school for student's education.
Then I misunderstood the...
And Page is the Parma Academy of Gifted Enrichment, and that's ours as well.
Oh, okay. I, when I read the...
A lot of moving pieces. We understand.
Brochure, when I saw Parma Academy, I thought of the charter school.
Oh, you're thinking of that. Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's a good point. Good question, though. All right, Ms. Casper, thank you so much for your time. I appreciate you.
I mean, I could follow up on the campus environment. That's exactly what we want to establish. We have what we think is a relatively decent track record of recent years of opening our campuses to our community. We've had community walking programs at all three high schools. We've had community swims, at least when we can actually get lifeguards. And we would continue that same type of open door policy for our community because we recognize that these should be assets beyond our children. Certainly, that's the most important function of a school, but they're also great facilities, and we want people to use them as often as possible. We've also opened Byers Field. We'll do so again this July. Every Thursday will be a movies night at Byers Field. We've had egg hunts there. So absolutely, we want these to be community assets. In terms of partnerships, both University Hospitals and TRIC are committed to assisting us in building campuses and facilities that meet more than just student needs as well. So for instance, when we talk about a STEM lab, and every school gets a maker space, well, we're going to dedicate our maker space to STEM, which we already, you know, do very well, but we'll build that lab in conjunction with TRIC so that we are really having essentially a community college lab in our facility for use by our students and eventually our community. University Hospitals wants a presence as well, both for students and for faculty and staff, but also for neighbors if they want to use it as sort of an outpatient type of facility. So both of those entities are strongholds within our community, and we're thrilled to be partnering with them.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Black, Teresa Black?
Hello, I'm Teresa Black. I live at 2438 Keystone. I haven't met most of the board. I met some, but Dr. Smiley and I have met, and he knows I am a huge proponent of every bond issue. And I have, even when I had to live out of state, I was telling my friends and neighbors here that they should support their school district. That will improve our district. That will improve our town. However, I do not agree with closing this school this fast. I think we're moving too fast. We're like a roller coaster at the top of the hill about to hit the bottom. Unfortunately, when I had to move away because of work, I fought and fought to get back into my community. We finally got back here a year and a half ago, and my kids were so excited, because I had to homeschool them. They were so excited to get back in school. I have children with anxiety and one that was a cutter. And she's got scars up and down her legs. She's healed. But we're taking these kids now and moving them, and they're very upset. That's why they're not here. Because the thought of going to another school where they can't walk, because they can't walk up there to Pleasant Valley. We live down here, way down here. That's ridiculous. I bought that house for Parma. Personally, I think there are other avenues to keep this school open. I would like to know if it had been explored to discuss with the county and the state to move head start and annex Park View, because that would also give us the lawyer access we need. That's probably one of my concerns, is has that been explored? And I know, I want one school, too, but this is often, it seems like this is more of a... We're seeking a dream. I know people say this is a plan, but if there's no bond even on the vote, and we know how against the bonds right now everyone is, not only is inflation high, but all of our property taxes next year are going to jack up because of all the values going up. Next year is when it hits our tax bills. I'll be honest, I can support you all day long, but you're not going to get the other percentage that you need at this point in time. So it's like saying, sort of like when the housing crisis happened. Oh, wow, let's go ahead and, you know, we're going to get this house because we know we're going to get the money down the road when the interest rate goes up. I don't see it. And right now, the Fed is pulling up the interest rates a lot. I work for real estate in the federal government, and I build buildings like this for government entities. And I'm telling you right now, it is a mess. There is nothing for sure. And I have seen building rates in the last six months go up 45%. So whatever numbers you have, I just think is kind of a joke, and we shouldn't even be there yet. And as for schools being safer, I'm just going to, God bless everyone. I hate school shootings. But we can do things in this school to make it safer because it's them getting in. That's the end of the road. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Black.
A few thoughts. We wouldn't have to annex Park View. We own Park View, actually.
Make it part of Parma High, so it's part of the campus, like truly pull it in as part of the campus. And I know it's money, but if you build like an annex to even get from this building to that one, I've seen a lot of things done.
Right, right. You know, and again, there's always different thoughts about what we could do. We've been committed to not putting any money into old buildings. That isn't part of the future. That isn't being economically efficient. You know, the building itself, again, qualified at 72% of a rebuild-to-renovate ratio. So renovating this into something permanent is... renovating this into something permanent is millions and millions of dollars. In fact, when we looked at the plan of what we would have to invest just to renovate current facilities, it was, I think, $235 million, just to renovate what we would need to operate. The other, we'll end that there, but I appreciate it, it's just, it really does come down to not putting money in the buildings that really aren't part of our future.
Okay, I have a question, just for sake, because I have been inside over there, and it's quite small, so even with an annex, so that does not gain us enough space?
Building's in horrible shape too.
Well, yeah, but it doesn't gain us enough square footage for ninth graders, right?
No.
Okay, I didn't think so.
You wouldn't fit ninth grade.
And then the other, the other piece, I just really wanted to quickly touch base on the roller coaster. This has been, I, in 2016, sat in the room next door and livestreamed while we were talking about closing both other schools and going here, and it was not one high school and not like that. Always the potential to build one new school, and obviously we got there. I supported it a couple weeks ago, but this has been years in the making, and I will say, like, I'm so grateful everybody's here and everybody's, I watched the Facebook Live as I was driving here because I was late from work, but I'm so grateful everybody's engaging, but these, Dr. Snyder, Mrs. Strapko, Dr. Smilak, the amount of energy that went into looking at every single configuration to get here was like, for every click going up that roller coaster hill, it was months of these conversations, the research, the data, looking at all those surveys that we paid since 2011, since the Dr. Graham consolidation days, looking at all of that data coming up to here. So it's been click, months, click, months, click, months. And so now we're here, and it's, we knew that it's been coming, and so we're here. So that's what brings us all into this room right now. So I just, I want to make sure that everybody knows, this is not, we didn't just go, let's toss a dart at a wall, we're not just...
Not email you, because there's a reason why this is my fault.
Absolutely. I also, as a mom, I wanted to tell you that I felt every moment of that, and everything we can do to minimize, no matter what configuration of consolidation happens to children, we will do everything to minimize that for the kids.
Put them all above us.
All right. Okay, very good. I was going to say something, but I lost train of thought.
Sorry.
You started, that's okay, that's all right, that's what happens. Anyway, so we have one last one. Angela Schwark? Is that right, Schwark?
Yes.
Okay. We have more.
Can I actually, like, can I turn that way? Can I actually get down?
As long as you're speaking, then a microphone.
Okay. Angela Schwark, I'm at 8222 Stratford. I'd like to give you some insight on somebody that lived out of state until three years ago, okay? Lived out of state, came here.
I lied.
This was our, my first year...
Ms. Schwark? Yeah, I can't hear you.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Moved out of state.
There we go.
I'm sorry, moved out of state from where I was living, came here. Were in our, my husband's grandparents' house that they built, a lot of history, 1952, okay, all the kids went to Parma schools. It is, it's really sad to me that we are the largest city around this area, what, 7th in the state? And we have nobody supporting trying to like build Parma back up again. Parma was like the city, guys. It was the city, right? What, where are we headed now? Take a look around in this, in just this room that you're in, and this is the one that you're fighting to keep? Like, be logical, please be logical about this. You've already been told that you can't both have a central high school built, right? And also keep this high school open while that's happening. So why would you fight to keep that? Because here's the deal, okay, so we keep this open, right? So now then we go build somewhere else. And then you have a whole bunch of people which have already started to complain about, well, it's not a central location. Well, they're trying to make it a central location, they're trying to make the new building a central location. They've told you that it's not possible to house all the children in this high school. They've had experts speak to that, okay? I just, I can't wrap my head around the reason why, $22 a month for $200,000, what's the average in this, you know, 150, 175,000? Not anymore, right? So, do you know why not anymore? Because it's a dying city, you guys, this is a dying city, and I, and I'm not...
I'm saying they're up, I'm saying they're up the road, 200,000, that's the only...
Right, right now, until, until everything crashes again, which it will. So, you know, the thing is, is that you guys want money to go into old buildings that are Band-Aids, you want renovations that are going to be 70, what, I'm sorry? 72. 72% of what it would cost for a new building. Now, I'm not, I'm not a financial whiz, I'm not, but I would like to think I'm a pretty logical person, and that just doesn't make sense to me. I mean, every other school district around has new buildings and new life. And I get, I get people are connected to this building, I'm about as, you know, as sentimental as somebody can get, but unfortunately, if you are graduates of this school district, have pride in it and want to give to the future. This high school is just a building. Let's move this district forward. This is my first experience, this is my first year in this district, and I have a child as a kindergartner and a two-year-old, so I've got a long way to go. But the misinformation online, please guys, do not take the information online, because people are just saying whatever they want, and none of it lines up. You've seen that today, right? How many people are opposed to this, and how many people are in this building right now? I see what, I don't know, 40 people, 35 maybe?
Ms. Schwartz, Ms. Schwartz, you need to wrap up, please.
Oh, sorry, no, I mean, that's just, I have a whole bunch of other stuff.
It's okay.
We'll talk to you for another day, yeah.
No problem. Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Comments?
Thank you for your comments.
Yeah. I could have done that one. All right, well, we have one more, but before we get to that one, it's like, I just know that change is difficult, and, and I appreciate the logical thinking process that you put out. Ms. Schwartz, it was awesome. But I have been around the state in some of the poorest districts, some of the poorest districts in the state have new buildings. So it's, why not, why can't we? Why can't we do it? Is it because we don't want to, is it we're attached to a school? And, you know, believe me, I understand about schools being raised and just being different and that being different, but the school, you made the school as a student and as an alumni, and you'd be proud that you graduated from Parma High and enjoy the history that it created, but let's start the new opportunity. Let's build a new, a new school, let's get it done, let's make it happen. Okay, thank you. Off my little soapbox for a second. All right, Mr. Kuzma?
Are you going to sing for us?
No.
Kevin Kuzma? You can call me Kevin. Mr. Kuzma's my grandpa. 3160 Hetzel Drive, Parma, Ohio. I'm a lifelong resident here in the city, graduate of Normandy High School, preschool, high school, as well as my sister, my parents, my aunt, uncle, all products of the school district. I'm a councilman in the city, I was a former school board member, so I understand what you guys are going through. Ashawn, how are you doing?
Good.
Dr. Smilak, thank you for coming to our council meeting this week, I appreciate it. I wanted to come in person to relay what I told to Dr. Smilak about this consolidation that you guys are looking at. If the consolidation goes forward, you would be moving forward with the short-term consolidation plan, which would be in contrast to what you guys had voted on, and with the one high school coming here, you would be going to the two high schools. The bond issue would have to pass, so we could get to what we're going for. I went to Normandy, Normandy's the newest building built in this district, 1968. That's not a new building, that is an old building. I think everybody's in agreeance with that. But if you're going forward with this, you would be closing this school, and the way I've known the Parma voters, a lot, it would be perceived, I think, to the Parma voters as a threat, we're taking the high school away, you have to pass a bond to bring it back. From my experience sitting up there, the Parma voters don't like to be threatened. And I think if it goes down this road, they're not going to go for the bond, and they're not going to go for the emergency operating levy next year. And I think that could possibly spell bigger issues for the school district. I hope I'm wrong with that, but from the voters I know, and from living here my whole life, I'm a product of these schools, I sat up there where you guys sat now, I have some concerns if it goes forward, you're going to take away the school, and it's, it's gonna, it's going to possibly have a negative impact with it. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Can I?
Absolutely.
First, thank you, Mr. Councilman Kuzma, I...
I love you.
Hey, you won the election, sir, you deserved the title. And Councilman Kuzma did echo those same sentiments the other night when I was at Parma City Council. The one piece, though, that I just want to share is that this isn't a game, this isn't a campaign strategy, this isn't a tactic, this is our reality and this is our necessity. We cannot afford to operate three high schools. We do not have any single high school that is large enough for all of our students. We cannot hold on to a school once we have closed it. We used to be able to do that, you can't do that anymore. So those three realities are completely independent of a bond issue. And when you add in that fourth factor of saying that this is the site of the future high school, well then it absolutely makes sense that this is the school that we'll close. And that is the singular most important rationale. I hear the gun-to-the-head piece, and while I feel that that's a good visual and sort of a nice soundbite, I also think that it belies the realities that we face. And I think if we're not clear, that's when we lose trust. Folks have said, well, you know what, don't say what you're going to do until the bond issue passes or fails. Can you imagine this population, if we pass a bond issue and then close a school? And we hadn't set anything up until then? Oh my gosh, we just voted yes and you're closing schools anyway? Or worse yet, if we fail a bond issue? And then we close a school and people say, now you're punishing us? We don't want to play games. We don't want campaign strategies and backdoor tactics. That is not what this board has pledged to be about. We've pledged to be transparent. Could it bite us? Maybe? But we will always err on the side of clarity and transparency. We've given you four very clear reasons why we're sitting here having this conversation. Those four are facts. That's our rationale. The other piece, and I thought about this after you spoke, Ms. Black, yes, costs are increasing. When we talked to the OFCC, they told us this very simple adage, the best time to build is always now, because next year's always going to be more expensive. So, yeah, I thank Mr. Norris for pointing out that, you know, I do have a gas allowance that is accurate, but I still have to put the, I still see the same things that you guys see every day. So it is a difficult time, but buildings are not getting cheaper, they will never get cheaper. That just does not happen, it's never happened, and it won't happen in this instance either. And then one final piece. There have been so many people that have called or spoken or sent an email and said, man, I want this to pass, but I just don't think it can. We need all of those people to help us. We need all of those people to go have two or three or four or five or six conversations with neighbors and friends and relatives, to say those exact same things that Ms. Schwark just said. You can walk to any border of our school district, toss a pebble across the border, you're going to hit a school district that has invested in new schools. One exception being Cuyahoga Heights, which is a very tiny school district, 750 students. We can't look down and say, woe is me, first it was COVID, now it's inflation. Our time has to be now, but we do need help. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Smilak. I just want to quickly say thank you for making the time to come out this evening and sharing your thoughts. We are, I truly appreciate it, and I know, I think I speak for the board, we really appreciate you guys coming out and speaking today. I know it's not a standard thing, that we don't do it at our general meetings, maybe that can change in the future, I don't know, but right now, we've made this opportunity for you guys to come speak, and I appreciate that you took the time and the effort to come down and do so. Thank you. So at this moment then, I move to adopt Resolution 2022-06-196 to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-06-196. Roll call, Mr. Nusio. Mr. Vaughn. Yes. Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you all for coming.[1735.99]